Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight, Thursday, November 17th, 2022, our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. I call our meeting to order and I ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I also ask if we could do a moment of silence. One of our past Board of Select members and also Chairman of the Water Pollution Control Authority, Clara O'Brien, sadly as past.
Thanks. I will call you later, honey. Okay.
You know, many years of service, I say both on the Water Pollution Control Authority. She may have been on it since the beginning. I'm not actually positive of that.
I have her rundown if you want it.
That would be fantastic if you could.
Yeah, so we'll do the moment of silence after we acknowledge your accomplishments. So Clara O'Brien, Hebron Board and Commission biography, she was on the Board of Selectmen from 2015 to 2019. She served on the Board of Assessment Appeals from 2003 to 2015. She served one term of the Board of Finance from 2006 to 2010 as Chairman. As Danny stated, she was on the Water Pollution Control Authority since 1997 to current and as Chair of that since 2003. Quite an accomplishment. Capital Improvement Program, 2015 to 2019, and she was with the Republican Town Committee from 2004 to 2006, and then again from 2010 to 2020.
As I say, I ask if we please take a moment of silence. Thank you. I also ask that, I know I plan to keep my prayers in my heart for her husband and family, the kids battling cancer. I know she's been battling it for a long time. It was probably a very well-kept secret, and she had always hoped that she was going to beat it, and last time I actually talked to her, everything was in remission. So when I got this news the other day, I was, to say the least, very surprised. Anybody have anything else on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Peter Casper. Yeah, I just, I mean, obviously, a tragedy and a life tragically cut short, but when you think about her as a person, and you think about her career as a nurse, and obviously, the accomplishments in her community, obviously, a lifetime of giving back to others is how I think of her, although tragically cut short, a life well-lived. So I just wanted to express that, and a community such as ours really firsthand sees what someone like, what one person can do on the impact they can have in a community, and she obviously exemplifies that. So she'll obviously be missed by Manny, but it's an opportunity to have her family hear of the thanks that we have as a community for the gifts that she gave us while she was with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, hearing none of those. Moving on, our next section are additions and changes to the agenda. The only thing that I would like to add would be a little bit, a brief discussion on the scenic road potential. I'd like to put that up under new business. There was a request to make Kenny Road a scenic road, and so Andy's going to talk a little bit on that unless people have got some sort of objection. Okay, great. Our next section will be our public comment section. Donna, is there anyone for public comment?
I don't see anything at this time. Well, maybe, maybe we do have.
I see, I think it's Mr., yes. We ask that comments be limited to three minutes or less. Please state your name and address. Yes, Mr. Tom Larry.
Thank you, Chairman. Kevin Tullamary, 110 Kenny Road, and also like to express my condolences for the loss of your former colleague and former member. I definitely appreciate all the effort that goes into your efforts on the boards and commissions, and I know we see things from opposite viewpoints at this point on certain issues, but I do respect you all and your efforts. I wanted to make that clear. In reviewing the agenda for tonight's meeting, I did have some very serious concerns about the question and answers that were provided regarding the Public Works, and it appears to me that many of the comments and concerns that were raised at the September 19th Public Information Meeting are being dismissed out of hand, and I don't see any really engaged evidence of why these are being dismissed. The letter that we provided with concerns coming from Mr. William Wurzika is based on 36 years of his professional experience as a hydrogeologist.
Mark, your mic is spilling over under public comment.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So these, some of my concerns have to do with those issues specifically, salt contamination, and how this can be dismissed out of hand when it's a known potential hazard, and as documented in the ERT of 2000, that this area does have fractured bedrock, and there is documented evidence, scientific evidence, of a high corollary between groundwater contamination. And it's not just from the salt shed. I did notice that the salt contamination comes from the general operations surrounding the salt shed. So it's not the activities solely under the shed that are of concern. It's what happens around the salt shed and the high degree of traffic and potential contaminants. And I would also like to point out, under Connecticut General Statute, Chapter 446K, Section 22A-471, that if there is a, if it can be reasonably expected to occur, if contamination of groundwater can reasonably be expected to occur, then the municipality responsible for such pollution requires a potable drinking water provided. It goes on, and then provide and arrange for a long-term potable drinking water supply. So I think as you go forward, and in the cost estimate, I think you have to investigate the future of providing town water, and also, I know that the memo and answers cite the best management practices, but I found a document from the Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection with best management practices for salt storage facilities, and one of those criteria is, a storage facility should not be located in areas where the groundwater has been classified as GAA or GA unless it is not feasible to locate the facility in a less sensitive area. I believe that there is a feasible opportunity here. Designs and suggestions have been provided to the Public Building Committee that show that there is a feasible option of reorganizing the transfer station and allowing the Public Works to expand on that location. To me, that seems very feasible and a very viable option where that contamination of the activities of the last 40 years and the landfill where that groundwater has already likely been compromised. So if you're going to quote best management practices, I have a request that you follow all of them and review that section provided by the Connecticut DEEP. And briefly, I would also like to refocus an issue not mentioned.
Okay, sir. Your three minutes are up.
Okay, may I just?
I actually gave you almost five.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. And I'm hoping that you are forwarding copies of that correspondence to the Town Hall.
I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
We have another public comment by Greg and Ellen Shortell.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Greg Shortell, accompanied by my wife Ellen, 22 Kenny Road. I'd like to reiterate some of Kevin's comments and his condolences to the board here tonight for pressing on with the very important work that you do, understanding the recent loss of a close colleague of all of yours and a steward for the town. We appreciate everything that you do and all the efforts that you continue to put forth in support of the town and in the best interest of all residents of the town of Hebron. So thank you for that. I would like to kind of tag on to what Kevin was speaking about, and my concerns are with some of the comments and responses to the questions raised during the Public Committee meeting on September 19th. Specifically, a repeated statement in a number of the responses was that we were being, we were making assumptions that wells will be contaminated, and in the statement, it was stated that, which is not the case. And I think that's basically the response or the position that the town is taking. And as we've learned and as we continue to research and understand the severity of this issue, it's just not a matter of if our wells will be contaminated by the presence of this facility and this multi-ton salt shed. It's when our wells will be contaminated. It was stated in one of the responses, and I think the question began, "The site has a shallow water cable and is located on a drainage divide." The response ends with, "The state has indicated they have not received any reports of groundwater or well-water contamination from salt storage facilities." So we did a little search on Google, and it didn't take us long, much effort at all, to find a number of articles that speak to this exact condition and this exact concern that we have. I will be willing to share an article and a report that was put together by the state in support of an issue that happened in Taland, specifically in the, I believe it was the Merlot Vineyard Street sections of Taland. There was also an article recently published in the JI, I think is dated July 12th, 2022, that speaks to this, the same problem. Another comment that was made.
We're already up to about five minutes, so.
Wow, that was a quick five minutes.
If you could just wrap it up.
Watch running, Dan, but I don't think that was five minutes at all, but I do have more concerns that I'd like to air, specifically, the potential impact on just two residents on Kenny Road. It was stated that 78 and 22 Kenny Road are the only two that may be impacted by any type of salt, sodium chloride runoff, and I don't think that's the case. I think there's many more homes in this area, Kenny Road, Millstream, and beyond down towards the south, towards Amston Lake, that could be impacted. So I just want to make sure that that's on the record and noted that we do have severe concerns, and the town needs to be responsible for this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And again, if you have documentation, please go forward it to the town.
And one more comment by Jean Tullamary.
Okay.
Good evening, Board of Selectmen, and thank you for letting us speak. I speak tonight regarding the question and answers from the Public Building Committee meeting, September 19th. On page two, you mentioned the impacts to two households, number 22 and number 78, situated downstream from the proposed facility. Approximately 1,400 feet or over a quarter of a mile away, runoff will be directed to the wetlands, not towards these two houses, end quote. However, surface water will be directed towards the third house, number 95. The eastern portion of the wetland is referred to as the headwaters of the middle stream. Number 95 sits below this wet area and directly adjacent to the middle stream. This means Public Works runoff, as well as the unavoidable vehicular pollution from the incoming and outgoing traffic over the proposed roadway between the proposed facility and Colbrook Village. All that pollution will be leaching into the ground and water directly above a family's home before going on to pollute the waters downstream. And I would also like to add that water pollution can travel miles underground, especially in an area such as a watershed, like the Raymond Brook watershed. So I think it would be kind of nice if we could keep number 95 in mind as all this wastewater is headed their way. Thank you, and thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you. I believe there was someone else who wanted to speak? Yes, go ahead.
Andrea Latanzi has a comment.
I think she's on mute.
Oh, no, she's on.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, and I joined a few minutes late, so I didn't hear, I heard you talking about the loss of someone, a colleague. I didn't hear who that was, but I'm sorry for your loss. And to the committee, thank you very much for your day-to-day efforts for the town of Hebron and its residents. I am not making a specific comment at this time, but I am commenting on that I support Jean and Kevin's questions and concerns as the same as the Shortells. I have the same questions and concerns and would like to have more thorough, comprehensive responses other than what was in the question and answer session that was in the minutes from this past meeting. Thank you so much for letting me speak. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, any, any other public comment? Hearing none, and as I said, if people do have, you know, documentation, it's important that copies get sent to the town so that they can be reviewed and answered professionally. You know, I do know that some of the salt sheds that were questioned and that had raised issues were salt sheds of an earlier design, and that's something that we may discuss tonight. So, any rate, Andy, are good to know?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just a side note, Mark Ribera, I don't think can stay for the whole meeting, so we're going to try to keep him on the agenda. So good to know. I'm not sure. Is Colin McNamara, the superintendent, are you with us tonight? He was invited, but I don't see him on here, so I think we can probably move along if he's not.
I don't see him here, Andy.
Okay, great. So our next would be our appointments and resignations. And?
Appointments and resignations, item 6A, 2022 Board and Commission reappointments. In accordance with the board policy, the filing list, appointment terms expire in December of 2022. Also included is the attendance records and policy regarding reappointments. This item will be continued on the November 18th agenda for actual reappointment based on responses received. So that would be tonight, because we didn't have that formal meeting last time, so that's why it reads that way.
Okay, assuming that everyone's had a chance to review those people who have decided to stay on and those who have decided to not, I would like to make the proposed motion and then open it up for discussion and then possible action on that motion. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen reappoint the following individuals for a four-year term to run until December 2026. The Conservation Commission, Joanna Chester; Commission on Aging, Tanya Maurer; Economic Development Commission, Neil Armwick; and Peter Casarella; the Housing Authority, Anne Lee Boynton; Public Building Committee, Richard Steiner and David Foster; Douglas Library Board of Trustees, Peter Casarella, Sue Porter, Mary Ann Foot, and Gail Richmond; the Water Pollution Control Authority, Chris Hemberger, and Benjamin Gilmore. Is there any discussion on those people? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
And myself, aye. Our next, we have a resignation attached. We have a letter from Eileen Terleki, resigning her position on the Green Committee. The motion is move the Hebron Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Eileen Terleki from the Green Committee with thanks for her years of dedicated service. Again, there's no real discussion unless people want. I mean, people's lives get busy, and she just decided that she wasn't able to stay on that committee to do with as she was hoping to do. So, any other discussion? Okay, Peter? Peter?
Peter Casper, aye, I'm sorry.
No, not from Mark.
Mark Ribera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
And myself, aye. So motion carries. Our next would be our Town Managers' report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So because we didn't have an official forum last time, some of the stuff might be redundant, but I feel it's a need quickly to go through it again. So a longtime resident and person that worked within the town and also very active with the Hebron Lions, Mark Tarbell, had passed away. So condolences to him and his family. We've been meeting with Connecticut Deep and Connecticut Water, and we have a meeting set up after Thanksgiving with Senator Murphy's office. That's for drinking water. We're trying to increase and enhance the water. We continually reach out to them to try to make sure they're aware that we're in need of more water. I did that with the Town Planner. We had a public hearing on Wall Street sidewalks on November 10th. It was at 6:30 at the Douglas Library. We advertised that heavily, put it in the newspaper and the social media, and we had a whopping three people. We even called the people on the road itself. So we definitely got the word out there, but that was the attendance. It went very well, considering that. The town departments were doing their CIP. Now, the data's come to submit them. They are coming into the office. I think we have quite a few. There's a few stragglers that are waiting for some final numbers, but we're going to start reviewing those and put those together. We hired a new financial administrator, Kevin Lawton. He started on November 10th. He seems to be doing well thus far, so let's welcome him aboard. We're still having trouble finding a social worker to work out of the Hebron Senior Center, so we're going to continue to try to fill that position. CCM held their convention. It was at the Mohegan Sun. They held the governor's debate. I know that's old news, but we hadn't met, so that was on the list. Planning and zoning had a public comment session for a scenic road. Kenny Road application was submitted for that, so we'll discuss that in a little bit. Town clerk is retiring as of January 1st, so I want to make sure that's noted, and we'll be coming with you December 1st with some information on that. The last day for people to be, submit an application or be nominated is the 18th, so we'll deal with that on the December 1st Board of Selectmen's meeting. And then there's the update I sent out today on Route 94. They're hoping to have that open before Thanksgiving, weather permitting. They're going to try to pave it on Monday, and then immediately after, put the guardrails in. Once the guardrails on, they will try to open the road. So that, that update came Monday, so let's hope it holds true. And that's all I had for the Town Managers' report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Old business, the Public Works Building Project Next Steps. And just, just as a clarification or whatever, this is going to be discussion solely between us, the Board of Selectmen, Andy, and Building Committee, if they want to partake in this discussion. So with that.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this has been a long process, so we're here to try to answer the questions the best we can with the most factual information. It was quite a task. We had to go through the video and listen to the questions and answer them with the best information we had at the time. So it took a little while. We're still waiting for some more information, as you know, to answer the questions that were brought up today under public comment, especially regarding the salt. We had reached back out to deep, and we're speaking with a gentleman, that's the bureau chief, Graham Stevenson. And quite frankly, he was approached by the Kenny Road people and asked not to submit his concerns because he wanted to wait to hear from them, and I guess they might have been busy helping family members or something. So that's been a little bit of a delay on answering that question. So that's that response. With us tonight is our Town Engineer, Tom Fenton, and some of the Building Committee members, and also our Public Works Director, Kevin Kelly. And we took the questions, and we thought some of them asked the same thing, so maybe we didn't hit each and every one, and we're open to trying to do that if we missed anything, but we'll go through what we have today. In doing so, I will turn it over to Tom Fenton first to go over the responses to the November 4th inquiry. I'm sorry, that was Dan's thing. Tom, can you go over your responses, please?
Sure. Just let me get, let me get things up there. Yeah, okay. Good evening. Yeah, I'm Fenton, the Town Engineer. I mean, we work with the town to develop responses to the public comments. I did hear some of the public comments tonight. I didn't hear all of them. My connection was in and out a little bit, but I think there was a, was a comment that they felt the responses were non-responsive, and I don't, I don't think that's. that they felt the responses were non-responsive and I don't, I don't think that's the case. I think we tried to address each comment. Those responses may not have been, you know, the comments tonight may not have agreed with all our responses, but I think, as Andy said, they're based on the best factual information. We have reached out to DEP again, as Andy said, to get further comment on the salt storage. We did have correspondence from the Department of Health in consultation with the, with DEEP and the last correspondence we have with them included the statement that given the construction.
Lost your audio.
Got to love go to meeting.
Tom?
Tom, we lost your audio.
I think he's frozen.
It looks like he's frozen.
I'll send him a message. I'm going to mute myself. Send Tom Fenton. Your computer froze up.
While we're waiting for Tom to get back on, I had sent to Andy, who had sent it to Kevin, a list of questions. Some of them, what I was trying to ascertain, because there have been people that have said, you know, why don't we just hire it out? Why don't we this? Why don't we that? Some of these are long before I ever even, well, I've been on the Board of Selectmen for a number of years, but some of this, I think even was while I was on Board of Finance. We have done studies and the studies came back. And I don't know if Kevin wants to chime in and kind of give a brief synopsis of what his research found, but there is a reason why towns have their own public works departments. Kevin, did you want to just briefly go over some of the questions?
Sure, Dan. Thank you. As you said, this was in response to your email. We kind of go through this exercise every year when we're doing our budget process. Your first question about emergency response. And we do that in-house because we never know when the emergency is going to happen. So all the incidents are different, whether it's being trees down across the road or the fire department needs support or the police department needs support or the parades or anything like that. You know, it's all different, but it's all handled in-house. That's something that you really can't plan for to contract out. Question about tree removal, that's kind of a joint effort. Any large projects where we have trees removed in bulk, we usually hire that out on a state contract. For the last couple of years, I've been using Distinctive Tree because they have the modern equipment called the Senabagan. And to give you an example, we were removing trees over on Lake Road and we had about forty ash trees right along the edge of the road that had to go. When you bring in a piece of equipment like that, we took down forty trees in one morning, cleaned them up, chipped them and moved on to another project. So it takes, usually when we're removing trees, we got to hire a bucket truck. It can cost anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars a day. When you're operating like that, it reduces that cost about two hundred and fifty dollars a tree. And I'm generalizing, but that's about what it is. We do have the bucket truck in-house and last year it worked fifty days in about fourteen hundred and forty man-hours. So using an average hourly rate, and I just threw a number out there, twenty-five dollars an hour, another ten dollars for benefits, this totaled to about fifty thousand four hundred dollars just for last, since the first of this year. So that bucket truck's paying for itself. It works all the time. So that does the ones that are one or two here, one or two there, the smaller trees. You know, we're hopefully going to come to an end of this ash tree problem within the next five years. And then things, hopefully by then will slow down. We talked about paving a little bit. All the major paving projects are subcontracted through the state VIP contracts. Okay, the state goes out to bid, all the different contractors bid on that every year. So that's who does all our paving in town. The only paving that we do in-house are all the small road patches, pothole patching around the catch basins that we repair, the road crossings. Our paving box has been down now for a few years and we haven't replaced it yet. So far, we've been able to subcontract everything else. So we're doing well with that.
I'm sorry, Kevin, could I just hold you up a minute? If Tom is ready to continue, I apologize, but.
I'm bad.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that. For some reason, it really happens, but I seem to be having some problems with my internet connection. But I tried something different here. So we'll see if this is good. Did you hear and did anything at all that I started or?
It got cut off pretty close to the beginning.
Okay. So Andy, do you want me to kind of walk through the responses to the comments? Is that, is that what you'd like me to do? Andy?
Andy?
Yeah, I mean, I think we did the best we could with the information we had. Still waiting from the state and we'll continue to supply the answers. But when we compiled this, we felt the Board of Selectmen should be the first ones to, you know, get this aired out of Board of Selectmen's meeting. Move it over to the building committee. But yes, please.
Okay, so, yeah, and I did hear a little bit of the public comments. I didn't hear it all because I was cutting in and out, but I think one of the, one of the comments said that they didn't feel the responses were non-responsive and I don't think that's the case. I think we really looked, you know, listened to the comments. We listed the comments. We tried to include everything that was raised and I believe we, you know, did our best to respond to the comments. It may not be what, what the public comments site may not agree with everything we put in. But again, as Andy said, I think it's based on factual information and the best information available to us. We have reached out to DEP and we're waiting for further response to that on the salt storage. We do, we did, and we voted it at the meeting. We did receive correspondence from the Department of Public Health in consultation with DEP that given the construction maintenance and operations of the facility are conducted with best management practice, any chance of groundwater contamination associated with the project would not be of significant concern to the departments. And by departments, that means both departments. So again, we're reaching out to DEP. We'll relay any information we get from them and certainly we would incorporate any, any practices that they recommend in our final design. So, you know, the plan is to design this facility to not allow releases of contamination from salt. And the idea with having the salt building, and I know that was mentioned about salt handling, the idea with having a large enough facility, building itself is so that all the operations and loading and.
Is he freezing up again?
I cut out again?
Yes. You cut out as soon as you start talking about the salt building.
Okay, so, so the handling, what I, what I said, what I was saying, and I apologize for the problems with the connection, but what I was saying was that the building is designed of size and configuration so that the handling, loading, all the operations with the salt can be uncovered. And that's, and that's an important factor. I did respond, I did discuss Mr. Wazika's letter. I responded to the comments as best I could. I did note that we incorporated, we would incorporate some of his suggestions regarding the truck washing and the salt storage in the design. I did note that there are only two properties that are down gradient of the facility that are by the grades and that is true. And I did provide a map to the, that you guys can, you guys can review, post it on the website, but it does show the contours and it shows which properties are down gradient. It also shows the distance of the houses to the, to the facility and they range from thirteen to fourteen hundred feet. The two properties down gradient are about fourteen hundred feet, which is about a quarter of a mile. So I did note that. Let's see. We did talk, the questions were raised about the plan of conservation development and why we specifically focused on a couple of sections. And the reason for that is that those were the two sections that addressed directly the facility. One had to do with municipal facilities and one had to do with the zoning of the parcel. So we focused on those two. It mentioned that, one of the comments mentioned that it was in conflict with other sections. I believe there's a more general guidelines, but I would need to know the specific sections that it's in conflict with to respond specifically to that comment. There was a question about how far the driveway would be from Church Street. The driveway, the driveway is twelve hundred fifty feet or about a quarter of a mile from Church Street. There is an existing gravel access pad there. So, you know, if you drive by, you can see where that location is. There was a question about whether the existing salt sheds on Old Colchester Road and Salt Box Road would be eliminated. And the answer to that is yes, they would be eliminated with one central facility. There isn't a need for the facilities at the north and south end of town. There was a question about whether Connecticut Water Company could supply the water. We have had a meeting with Connecticut Water. We're, we're working with them to establish the needs. They indicated that they could support it. It is, it is a relatively low water use relative to, relative to other uses. So at being an industrial use, it is a relatively low demand use. There was a question about the traffic impacts and traffic going by the school. That came up in a couple of comments. The traffic impacts for this project will be minimal. So it's, it's an operation, it's, it's, traffic is only generated to the hours of operations, which are seven to three thirty, the exception of snow removal operations. So there are twelve employees and two staff, I believe, so fourteen employees. We asked, we asked Kevin to kind of look, go through his operation and, and, you know, just give an estimate of the trips. So the traffic will be generated from employees coming to and come to and from work and the crew is going out typically, you know, to their assignments. And we came, he came up with about fifty vehicle trips per day over an eight-hour period that works out to about six vehicles. We estimated that eighty, ninety percent of the traffic will go north and exit John Horton Boulevard, particularly the truck traffic, because the truck traffic is going to go on the route that's, is most feasible and best for them. So they're going to go north to the light at John Horton Boulevard and exit the site that way typically. So, you know, the traffic impact on Keeney Road will be very minimal, particularly with relative to any other use that would be on that property. So with regards to the snow removal and routes and the traffic trucks going past Hebron Elementary, that came up. So in discussions with Kevin, we established that there's thirteen plow routes now and nine of those, those routes typically pass Hebron Elementary School because they have to get to points north and west and east of town. Under the new facility, again, most of the traffic will be going out John Horton Boulevard. So really only two or three of those routes would end up going by the school to access their points. There was a question about direct impacts to wetlands. We've gone over this before, but the direct impacts of wetlands will be eliminated to wetland crossings of John Horton Boulevard under the current plan. All the other disturbances are outside the wetland area. Roach controls will be utilized during construction and that best management practices that we discussed will be employed after discussion, just construction to mitigate the impacts. Stormwater runoff from the developed area needs to be treated in accordance with the DEP stormwater memo. Has there been any impact on endangered species? The natural diversity database maps have been, mapping has been reviewed and there are no federal listed species within the project area. There was a comment that the facility should be kept in its addition, its current location because it's in an industrial zone and that Keeney Road is a residential neighborhood. And there was concerns about truck traffic, diesel, gasoline storage, truck washing in a stormwater pond. So the current facility is located in a residential zone. It's not industrial zones, residential zone. The current proposed zone is a mixed use, a commercial mixed use zone. The new building location, the closest residence is about thirteen hundred feet away, as I mentioned, which is about a quarter mile. The current building on Old Colchester Road is a hundred sixty feet from the closest residence and there are four residents within five hundred feet. So it's actually closer to residents than the new facility. I discussed the, the truck traffic from the proposed facility and also noted that most of the traffic will be exiting to the north. Fuel storage will be in above-ground compliant tanks with secondary containment, a convault tank similar to what's down at the existing facility. We are proposing a truck wash bay environmentally compliant will be. No include drains that will discharge to an oil-water separator and then to the sanitary sewer system. And the stormwater ponds are a measure that are incorporated to control the stormwater runoff and capture and treat it. We would incorporate pre-treatment in there to probably refine sediment and, floatables and sediment removal. Question came up, who from the town will monitor the best management practices? So there are two plans in two permits that are applied to this. One is during construction and, and one is during operational facility. So the first permit is the, the general permit for discharge of stormwater and de-watering wastewater from construction activities. And that requires preparation of the stormwater pollution prevention plan. So during construction, the construction manager, the contractors are required to perform weekly inspections, keep a logbook of all the erosion controls and any activity on the site. In the case of an inclement weather event, they need to complete inspections and monitor forms and after the events, any division included. And then the engineer for the project will also be conducting regular inspections. The general permit for the operation is the discharge of stormwater associated with industrial activities and that requires also a plan, a stormwater pollution prevention plan for operation. It requires an operation and maintenance plan to be prepared with requirements for best management practices after construction during the occupant phase. Monthly inspections will be done by the Public Works Department and then semi-annual audits are done by an outside engineer. The records have to be kept on site and they're subject to audits and inspections by Connecticut D at any time. There was a question that the old, there was a comment that the old Colchester Road is a feasible alternative, that this is stage one of a larger project and that no other town has a DPW near the center of town. We don't agree that the Old Colchester Road is a feasible alternative. Again, when looking at the Old Colchester Road site and laying out facilities, we can't just look at it on a flat piece of paper and assume that buildings are configured in a certain way. We have to support the facility that's going to be, going to be able to service the town and provide an integrated facility with all the measures, with enough area to employ the best management practices and accommodate for the topography and the truck movements, the parking, all the operational aspects. So, you know, just placing buildings on a site or squares. Um, or squares on a site is not, is not, um, show that a site is feasible. It really has to be looked at. Um, you know, it has to take into consideration the topography, the available land. The com- combined operation of transfer station, the extent of the site that has a landfill on it. And if all those things aren't considered, it's not, it's not a, a, um, thorough analysis. And, and, you know, we've been through this, you know, a number of times. Um. The, the facility that is proposed as needed right now will not, um, feasibly fit on that site. Um, there was question, there was a comment about the master plan, um, the long-term plan and, you know, the, I guess the key thing here is that this point, this. This plan right now is for public works. Um, the, the master plan for town facilities is more of a long-range plan. Um, it's something that, you know, the town wanted to evaluate the property for possible future use. But it's a long-range plan and it's not, um, you know, not being proposed at this time. So, um, you know, there's no assessment of, of a fifty million dollar cost or anything like that. This is, this is right now, we're just working with the, um, the public works facility. Uh, the same as the no other town has its public work facilities in the center of, uh, center of town. Um, we don't believe that to be true.
Raising up again.
Okay, am I back now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Good, what, what did you miss?
Uh, you start talking about, uh, facilities near centers of towns.
Okay, okay, yeah. So, um, yeah, basically, you know, based on the research we've done and, and.
I have to call him again.
Call Tom Benton.
Calling Tom.
Do you have your, uh, notes in front of you, Kevin?
Yeah, I'll see if I can help him out a little bit. Um, you know, he was talking about towns that have public works facilities in the center of towns. We sent out a little, uh, a request on the Yukon listserv. Tom, Tommy there?
Yeah, yeah, hang on. Yeah, I'll put my screen back on.
Trying to help you out a little bit, but I'll let you take back over.
Okay. Make my camera back on. Sorry about that, guys. Uh, I don't know what's going on. Okay, um, let's see, uh, we were talking about, um, the center of town and then I just mentioned that, um. Uh, oh, about bringing the project to referendum. Did, did, did you guys hear that?
No.
No, we were still talking about, we did a listserv about the center of town. People are saying that municipalities don't have their public work facilities in the center of town. We got responses back. That there's at least several that responded back.
He's frozen again, Andy. Maybe he could dial in.
Yeah, let me, I'll try to tell him that. Just to, just to clarify on that, uh, comment there, it lists the ones that we got responses back from Yukon. Um, I believe though, I gotta make a correction here myself. The one from South Windsor is set back from the center of town. It's a town hall they were talking about, but Bethlehem is not listed and that's directly in the center of town. Um, and. Well, here's, Tom coming back, maybe not. So anyhow, um. His notes say that, uh, Hebron zoning laws were established to be consistent with the town's plan of conservation and development. And any other viable location for this project would be in an area currently zone residential intended for that use. While governmental uses are permitted in the residential zones, extensive studies have been conducted and then. Alternative suitable location was not found. And I think we've made numerous presentations to the board of selectmen in the public on that. Um, we've looked at many, many sites. I don't have the actual number in front of me. Um, I know the building committee's on, they could probably help out with that. Um. Public water and sewer are critically important for this site. If we're going to be able to have a place to drain any. Um, waste from wash bays and, um. The salt sheds and things like that. We need the sewer system to have to be available there. And, um, public water is important too, where right now we operate off of well. Then it goes into, talks about the, um, detailed construction costs of the project. They've not yet been prepared, but it was, but it will be part of one of the many pre-referendum tasks. A conceptual estimate developed seven, bunch of years ago when the project was first started being talked about. Put it in a range of eleven to twelve million dollars. However, because of the price escalation or current inflated construction costs, which everybody's been seeing lately. That cost probably going to be anywhere from sixteen to twenty mi- million. So we have to talk. Soon about if we're going to move forward and we're going to finish the plan so we can put a cost on that, on the project. Um. He notes here in his, uh, response, yes, all permit ac- applications and actions will be posted on the town website. A traffic study has not been prepared for this project. The planning and zoning commission may request a traffic study as part of their special permit. Site plan review, but given minimal levels of traffic, the project will generate, the traffic study is probably not going to be needed. The needs analysis that was conducted for the public works facility is based on the amount of town-owned infrastructure that is needed to be maintained. It is not population dependent and therefore updating previous studies would not yield any substantial changes. Although there's been a slight decline in the town's population, the amount of roads and related infrastructure that the DPW has to maintain has not decreased. Yet it has increased. Every time a new road is built, we take it on. In addition, all of the existing infrastructure continues to age. It will require more attention by the DPW and not less. There have not been site-specific geotechnical studies. These are typically performed as needed during further design phases. Uh, Tom already mentioned that relocating the town hall and the firehouse are not, um, considered part of this plan. But that was the long-term vision that will be discussed sometime in the future, possibly. Um, they were talking about economic development, maybe moving the firehouse off Main Street sometime ten years out. And maybe moving town hall off Main Street forty, fifty years out. But those are just, you know, long-term vision that was being discussed. Um. Most of the deficiencies at the existing site are caused by lack of usable space, both inside the buildings and on-site. I think everybody is toward the site and they have seen that. And this would be resolved by having a newly construction, constructed environmentally compliant facility with adequate space. Additionally, while unnecessary repairs to the existing facility will be undertaken. It is recognized that they are providing temporary and not long-term solutions. It was thought that this large open area that they were calling the, uh, the great lawn in this project would be a desirable asset. As a town green scene, the town doesn't presently have one because it got lost when the DOT redesigned the traffic flow within the center of town. Um, we have discussed that if we want to save some money, maybe we should dial that back and cut that out. I'm not sure I agree with that. I think that's one of the more attractive pieces to this project. That's, Tom's notes on that. I hope I covered for him well.
Thanks, thanks Kevin. I'm back now, by the way. I've, we're, I'm going off my phone, so I think I may be okay. So if there's any follow-up questions or anything, I apologize again, but there's anything you want me to elaborate on, I'm, I'm.
Tom, I don't, I don't think we touched on anything from Mr. Wazika's letter. I know we're waiting for the response from Deep, but, um, we, we talked to Deep about that and the. The areas of the towns he stated, we, we were aware of and we looked into like Taland and Woodstock, uh, one was in Marlboro. And I forget where the other one was, but, you know, this isn't any, by any means, um. And Mr. Wazika, it sounds like he had a great career and, uh, very passionate about his work. Um, but we reached out, we haven't gotten a response back, as I said, but we did get a verbal that. DOT are building these, uh, salt sheds all over the place. I think they got like four or five brand new ones in the last four or five years. A- and in speaking with, uh, Mr. Graham Stevenson, we poised the question and said, in the last ten years. We looked at what Mr. Wazika reported on, those were long-term, uh, salt storage facilities that probably weren't using best practices at the time. But like in Taland have now been enhanced, uh, in Portland have been enhanced, Woodstock new and enhanced, Marlboro addition and enhanced. So anything in the last ten years, the question was asked to Deep and hopefully we'll get that back from them. That it was built to the new standards. There has not been any reports of any contamination thus far. At least that's what we've been told. So we're not trying to discredit, uh, Mr. Wazika's concerns. I'm sure they were valid and, and we appreciate his input. But in talking and doing this in the industry for thirty-seven years myself, and in talking with Deep. The, the biggest problem, the biggest problem with salt is the application of putting it on the roads. And every town in the state of Connecticut is using salt or a salt product. Until they come up with something else, which I'm hearing is not in the, in the pipeline. The, the, it's how you apply it to the roads can do the most damage. So that's throughout. The state, throughout the town, um, we, we do best management practices. We actually promote green. Uh, GoPro, which is the system where you calibrate your Sanders. So we're doing everything that we've been told to do. But I, I want to be clear that, you know, yes, salt storage has to be done properly, especially with these new standards. But the, the real, the real culprit here is, is when you put it down on the roads, it has to be done right. That's the worst. And Deep will put that in the letter. We've talked to them and that's been his, uh, recollection every time we talk to him. I don't have anything else to add to that part, Tom.
Your best be on mute.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. What was that, Andy?
I, I was just trying to help you out with, with, uh, they asked a question early under public comment, but we didn't address Mr. Wazika's letter.
Right.
So you might, you might want to go into that further, but.
Right. Yeah, I was just, um, yeah, I think I, I did, uh, kind of note about the, it was talk about the properties down gradient of the project. I noted that there were two, um, uh, he said, suggested locating a, a location where the groundwater has already been up, up impaired. We're not aware of another, uh, area in town where the groundwater has been impaired. That would be, um, a suitable site. Um, as we discussed, the existing site cannot physically accommodate the, the, uh, the project. Um, uh, he, as Andy talked about, I think he just talked about, um. Uh, the sites that had contamination, we believe were the older sites that weren't built to, uh, today's standards. Um, we're not aware of sites that are built to the current standards and meet the current permit requirements, um, that have had issues with, um, contamination. Um, we mentioned again, the DEP and the, um, uh, correspondence from the Department of Health. Um, that, um, it said, uh, with best management practices employed, um, they did not have concerns about groundwater contamination. Um, Mr. Wazika suggested, um, salt storage handling and truck washing, we performed undercover and, uh, enclosures. And we agreed with that and we were incorporating that to the plan. And then, um, he mentioned testing of residential wells, um, and, um. Uh, consideration of extending, uh, water. We do agree that there should be baseline testing of, of the wells, uh, in the area. I think that's something the town should do. Um, and I, I just said, there's, I don't believe there's a plan to extend public water at this time. But again, I think that, um, that, um, suggestion is based on the assumption that there will be contamination and, and, uh. And we believe that, um, you know, the site again is discussed, if the site is, um, constructed with all the best management practices, that there won't be a, an issue.
Okay. Um, there's been. A lot of discussion about putting or keeping it where it's at. Uh, could you go into the, the issues, why it is not feasible? Uh, to keep it where it is, um, why it just doesn't fit on the footprint? And I don't know if you want to get into, you know, some of the changes of the, of the federal bridge laws, changes in some of the OSHA standards. Uh, the fact that our town employees are actually parking on property that's not owned by the town. Um. I don't know if you wanted to address some of that, or if you could, I would appreciate.
So, and Kevin, I mean, you can weigh in to operationally, but, um, you know, I'll just reiterate that we looked at a number of different alternatives. Um, the complications are that when you account for the landfill and the transfer station, there's a very small area left for public works operations. The facility does not have enough room now. And, um, we, we had a needs analysis, uh, uh, done and an architectural plan drawn up for the buildings. Um, we need the storage building, we need the salt shed and we need the, um, office and, um. Uh, the office and the, and the garage to accommodate the trucks. Um, need to accommodate the turning movement of all the trucks and operational areas outside the building. Need to have enough room to, um, the salt shed has to be large enough so that all the salt handling can be undercover. Um, and the site is challenged topography. There's a, there's a twenty-foot drop-off right behind the, the existing building. Um, there's a thirty foot, foot drop-off, uh, beyond the front area on the adjacent parcel, um, from CLMP that we were looking, that the town was looking at. So, um. The, in order to, to construct a facility, um, there has to be enough of a level area or enough, enough of a level area created to support those operations. And the site, um, site just doesn't support that. We, we, um, under the current, uh, you know, to accommodate what has been determined are the needs of the department. So Kevin, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Yeah, well, just a couple of things. Uh, first of all. It's desirable to have your fleet undercover in the winter months, not only for operational purposes. So when they call the guys and they have warm vehicles ready to go, they're not out scraping ice off and warming them up for a half an hour, getting them ready to go. But those trucks now are worth two hundred and fifty thousand dollars apiece. And you got a fleet of them. You got to protect them. So then everybody asks, well, why don't we subcontract it out? We can't find subcontractors. The last couple of years, I've been used keeping one on for, to cover us for COVID. I tried to get them this year. I can't get them this year. I can't find a contractor. I'm talking to the neighboring town about, you know, they're coming to me saying, hey, these guys want all this extra money for fuel because of the, the cost of fuel now. This is, you know, you're going to have to do it because you're not going to find anybody else. So the cost you, last year was two hundred and twenty dollars an hour for a truck like that. And I'm sure, I'm sure it's going to be all at two fifty. You're running eight to ten hours each storm. You, you go out, you're averaging fifteen major storms, just throwing a number out there. Probably throw in another ten small ones. It, it's a lot of money. And that's if you can find somebody. They're not reliable. Um, they break down, they don't care. They go home. We break down, we got somebody to cover us. So that's what your in-house fleet is able to do. And that's why all. We break down, we got somebody to cover us. So that's what your in-house fleet is able to do. And that's why all towns maintain their own fleet of trucks. If it was desirable to be able to subcontract it out. You know, towns would do that because trucks are expensive and they keep going up in price, but you know, we can't control inflation. We can't control cost of construction. No, it's what it is. Um, you know, I gave you some information. Um, about the cost of the snowplow. Um. You know, we subcontract things out whenever we get a chance. Sweeping, you have to use some cost there of what sweeping costs to sub it out. It's huge, huge numbers. It's like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year and you have to sweep your roads every year. It's a part of the MS four permit from DEP. And you lose any flexibility if you don't have your own sweeper. You have an accident, you got to go clean up the sand. You know, you got to hire somebody. So it gives you sweat uh flexibility. Um. You know, I talk about safety. You know, you see the way we stack our trucks inside the garage. We pile them up on top of each other. You can't walk from one side of the garage to the other. You know, we do the best we can. It's only a matter of time until somebody slips on a wet plow and. You know, breaks an ankle or something, but you know, that's not the way it's supposed to happen. You're supposed to have. Be able to pull your trucks nose to nose, you know, and have ten days worth so you can keep a dozen trucks inside, you know, so. Uh, that's, you know, storage. We don't have any storage. I have filing cabinets in the women's restroom. That's our storage. We don't have our parts storage. The guy's break room now is up in parts room upstairs. They don't even have a break room because we had to move our secretary into our small kitchen area because, because of COVID, we had to separate. We got a little shack out there for my foreman. You know, we appreciate that you were able to help us out with that and give us the funding for it, but. You know, we just don't have the space. Um. That's my comments on it.
Yeah, and I'll just add one, I'll just add, I'll just add one more thing. Um, and I think this is part of the uh conference response where I was, I was off. But um, the public water, public sewer, um, that is, that is important and um the sanitary sewer, there is no sanitary sewer at the old site. There's problems with the septic system now. Um, and the, the, just it was a discussion about the wash bay. Um, the wash bay um has floor drains that has to go to an oil water separator. And on the new site, it will discharge to the sanitary sewer, which is desirable. Um, the existing condition has uh configured that it has to go to a holding tank and then be pumped. Uh, and hauled off site, which um is, is really, um, I think Kevin can attest, it becomes a very costly process. If it has to be um hauled off.
Extremely expensive, Tom, because every time you wash trucks, you gotta go out, you gotta pump that out.
Right. So the public water and public sewer is important and um, and the existing site is not, you know, for, for a, a environmental compliant. Um, and, and integrated facility and the current site does not have that.
Under the new plan, right now, we have pieces of, of town equipment. In other spots besides our public works facility. Would all the, with, with the new design plan have them all back? Uh, except for what's rest, uh required down at the uh transfer station. Would they all be back under the uh roof of town, of town buildings?
We would take advantage of the existing building for our cold, some more cold storage as in sweepers. And mowers and things in the off season. Right now, we're storing them at the Lions Club. They've been generous enough. For the past years to let us store up there. We just brought a couple of rollers up. We're bringing our sweeper up tomorrow. So. We would be u- u- utilizing the old building. Yeah, I wanted to, if I could chime in, one of the, just quickly, so we get enough information out. We're also looking to put those senior buses undercover. So the drivers don't have to clean the snow off every morning when they come in before they take the seniors to their doctor's appointments around their trips. So that would. We do have a plan for a cold storage. Uh, right now they sit outside. And the part-time drivers have to spend time de-icing and getting the snow off the roofs of those vans before they go out.
Um, open it up uh to my fellow select people or building committee people. Because I'm the only one talking. Go ahead, please. Yes, Tiffany.
I'll go. I, you know, I just, it just one thing that I'm thinking about, um, and I want to thank um Andy and his team for pulling together these answers. Um, understanding that I think you, you want to fill in some other, you, you know, questions and answers. Um, what is the plan for sharing this externally with the public? Um, how will it be shared and are we? Going to be thinking about that moving forward? I think it's great to share these during the meeting. But I also think it would be helpful to have a repository of this information so people could access it at any time. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and that's a great question. So Tiffany, the theory is anything we do, we always like to present it to the board of selectmen first. Get their approval in these comments to suggest and even help us uh do that. So right away, we plan on putting it up on the webpage. You, we use, we're gonna, you know, where all the other stuff is on the town's webpage, we'll, we'll tell people uh through social media. Uh, where to find it. Um, as Danny stated all along, if you have questions or concerns or documentation, you can always send those into my office. If any of those residents want to come in and sit down with the town engineer, uh, the building committee, myself, Kelly. Tour the facility, uh, we're open to that. Um, the next thing I plan on doing is going to the building committee after the board of selectmen. And sharing this information with them. And I, I, you know, without me being, you know, contradictory to. Some of the public comments, I, I, I think we did a pretty good job trying to answer the questions and if we, if we miss stuff, just let us know and we'll try to. You know, further respond, but I, I think we did an earnest attempt to try to answer uh every question. We looked at the tape. It took us quite a while. Then the reason it did is because we really didn't want to miss anything. So if we did, we apologize. It wasn't intentional. We're, we are waiting, as we stated several times, for some more information from deep. Um, but yeah, we'll do it on social media. We'll give it to the public building committee. Uh, the next steps would be along with these responses. Is I've been told from B and L companies and then Tom's working on some numbers. By the December first meeting of the board of selectmen, we should have the amount of money to finalize a final design and a cost. Uh, estimate what that's going to cost to do that. So at that December first meeting, we'll have numbers of what we're looking to have budgeted to finalize the design. And what, what we're going to need to borrow the money, get a final cost. And at that time, the board of selectmen will have to decide how they want to move forward. At that time, the public building committee, along with the town and the engineers have done their job. Uh, and the charge of the building committee was to find a piece of property that would support this. We purchased the property for this. And now we're going to show you uh what it looks like. We answered all the questions on hopefully historic reservation. Uh, like Tom said, we have waters from public health saying we're not gonna. If it's built and, and when we submit plans, it'll be monitored by them that we're not going to contaminate the water. Um, with, with what the, the new regulations are. So the next meeting um of the. Board of Selectmen, we will discuss that again. But moving forward after this meeting, we immediately go and give these answers to. The building committee and have them tweak them. We'll go on social media. Like I said, we'll put them in the paper where it can be found. And if you have any other suggestions beyond that, please let us know.
Uh, Peter?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a couple of comments and, and a couple of questions. First of all, uh, I, I really, as I continue to. Meet with folks in the building committee and, and go to the meetings and I just wanted to thank the building committee. Uh, for the work they've done in the past and present and obviously future. We're very fortunate to have you. Uh, not an easy job sometimes and obviously a lot of technical expertise is required and a lot of patience. And, and so I just wanted to. Go on record to thank you for your continued uh service to the community and obviously with, you know, obviously the work that Andy and your team is doing, but. I, I do really appreciate it and uh, and I think one of the things is the comment, Mr. Chairman, is. We seem to drift back and forth a little bit in the comments and respond to the public about. The need, the justification for a need for a new facility. I, I just, again, it was my, my personal opinion. I think we're way beyond that. I think. We ought to simply agree that we need a new facility. Uh, we, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time talking about why it's needed. I think it's the ultimately logistics and, and, and sort of the next steps to institute a new facility, uh, obviously is what should be the focus. So sometimes I think we still are trying to justify the need and I think we've covered that uh m- more than enough and. And um, and so just a couple of other, or, or one question maybe for, for Tom and it. Have, and I know, I know the logistical issues would be a problem. I don't understand that. So I don't need to, uh, to hear why it's not ideal. But my question is, was there or could there be a, a review as to uh keeping the salt somewhere else?
I think that comes down to, to, I'm, I'm going to defer to Kevin on that because I think that really becomes an operational, um, an operational issue. So Kevin, I'll let you take that one.
Now, all I gotta, my only comment is it doesn't make sense to spend between sixteen and eighteen million dollars. To build something that's inefficient, because you would be inefficient. And if somebody's got to come in, get their trucks fired up, go to another location to load up, bring the loader with them. It just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I, I recognize logistically it's not ideal. Operationally it'd be a challenge. I just didn't know if that was explored. Um, and again, I understand the obvious concern.
We, we, we discussed it, yes. I can jump in on that quickly just to give you an example. So. I built the facility in East Haddon. That shows you how old I am before I came here to Hebron. So twenty seven, twenty eight years ago, we built a new facility. Salt shed and a garage uh off of Hood Lane, off of Mount Prince Assets. And while it was being built, we did it like a satellite. We did it in phases and we, we, we funded it. The budget's not bonding. So in doing that, the, uh, hopefully people know these historic sites, the, the Goodspeed Opera House is right down by the bridge in East Haddon by the river. That right across the street was the public works garage where all the trucks were stored in the snowplows. What we would do in inclement weather, sometimes the weathermen are right, sometimes they're wrong. We'd have to go down to that area, get the trucks out of the garage. Go all the way up to Mount Prince Assets on the hill where the salt shed was and, and load the truck before we could go out onto the roots. A lot of times what would happen if uh weather wasn't predicted and then it came, the trucks weren't loaded and a lot of the cars would get stuck on the inclines going up to the hill. So plow trucks couldn't get to the salt in order to go out and salt the road so the cars could get off the hill. So. There really is a logistical issue there um and time lost. And then secondly, um. It, it, it takes, if you, this stuff is uh on the trucks, you know, the steel's from China now. It's not the same steel we had when we were growing up. So uh, if you load a truck with salt and you let it sit in the truck. And then say the weatherman was wrong and you don't have to go out. Now you loaded all those trucks because you're not up at that site. They're sitting in the garage hoping the guys are going to go out. If they don't go out, you got to wash fifteen trucks and dump all that salt. So you're, you're doing multiple handling of salt when you really didn't need to. And then also, you know, you've got equipment in two different places. You've got loaders up there where the salt shed is and you might have an issue at the, the yard where the trucks are to. Move a plow around. So there's a lot of logistical things that go into it, but we're throwing down pretty deep now.
Although I think um, one of the thing, and I appreciate that because the only experience I have with salt is when I use it for steak. So I appreciate that. And I think that. Uh, that's a question I've been asked a number of times. So I think back to maybe Tiffany's, as she's saying, how do we best communicate? I don't think it's bad to get into some of that detail as we communicate with the public because. A logical question is, well, okay, we hear all the time, we, salt, 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 put it somewhere else. Okay. Maybe we should take the time to outline practically why that's not a viable option. I mean, I can, I, I mean, I knew right away when I asked the question, well. Having the product that you need offsite when you could have it onsite, okay, that's not, that's pretty obvious on that that would be a problem. Um, but I don't know if, if taking some extra time to sort of, people don't clearly probably truly understand. What it takes to uh, to move that product and those things that you just talked about, Andy. So just something that maybe we should think about. Uh, so I appreciate that. I think, I mean, I, I was interested and I learned something. So I appreciate it. And um.
One of the, one of the other main reasons is we don't want to end up like a Woodstocker. We don't want to end up like Talon. We, we think we can enhance and do better with what we're doing now. And there's people both up at the salt box that live near that facility. And down in Old Colchester Road that are hoping that we build a new facility and we do even better than what we're doing now in storing salt. So there's a lot of people that. Are near these salt areas now that are watching what we're doing. They're not as oysters as maybe some people, but I get the calls in my office of. What's going to happen with salt box if we build a new facility? Is that going to go away? And I said, yes, that's the plan.
Yeah, the salt box is, I, that's where I live. So I, I, I see, I see that beautiful salt box all day long. And so.
A lot of people that are hoping that, you know, that gets, you know, removed. And if we were to do this, that is one of the things that's proposed. And the same thing at Old Colchester Road. I mean, it, it, trust me, we put a lot of time and effort. If, if it could stay there. I wouldn't have to, and the board, building committee wouldn't have to take all this heat. It would be so much easier for us, but we just couldn't get it to work and.
I appreciate that. And again, I'm just, you know, trying to be reflective of some of the questions that, that I get asked and making sure that you have an opportunity to answer those questions. Uh, in, in a public forum. And the other uh question I had, I'm sorry to take up so much time, but um. Here, here's a concern that I have. It, it, we don't have a plan B. So if this doesn't pass referendum, you know, what do we do? Um, to not have it be another ten years, five years, six years, whatever it's going to be. We, you know, I'm very passionate about the fact that. We need a new facility. And the idea that if we, if we say no, uh, or it doesn't pass because we don't get enough support. Um, we're going to start all over again. Uh, I, it, is there a plan B? Should we be looking at that? If there isn't. I, I just want to make sure I, I understand that thought process because, and, and what would have, what would be involved. The idea of having it last in the ten years to do it all over again is not something that I think is, is something that we should support.
Yeah, no, you know, that's another great question. And we hear the people loud and clear. We're, we're, we're not. It's not falling upon deaf ears. So I hate to float any new ideas because every time I do, it's almost like we get jumped on. So. These are just uh ideas. They're not on paper yet. So please keep that in mind, but. We're looking every day. I'm talking to the building committee members every day. We're meeting with the town planner. We're talking to other people to see if we can come up with some stuff, but what's going to happen? And, and I know this isn't a popular uh, a topic and, and it's expensive. Um, but you know, we put, we built new firehouses. We, we did the schools. We, we put additions on the library, the senior center. You know, it's public works is crying with these facility studies that we need a new facility. So what's going to happen on plan B is we're going to have to compromise. We're going to have to come up with something. But it just can't be cut, be because we just don't want it. We got it. We definitely have one. We got to put it somewhere. So I'm just going to throw this out there and I'll probably get my head chopped off because it's not come to fruition yet, but. The, maybe some of the people that are concerned on Keene Road, maybe if we don't have the road come out on Keene Road. Maybe if we. Talk with St. Peters and, and work a deal with them across the street where their parking lot is and put a road in there. They're looking at trying to put some affordable housing uh right up against the road in eighty five. That's not really all in the sewer district. There's a big drop off there. So it might be a, 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 where everybody's going to compromise a little bit. Maybe St. Peters will work with us. We're approaching them. Uh, that way we wouldn't come out on Keene Road, but the downfall that is, you'd still have that salt shed on that piece of property that we purchased. So, you know, it's not, it's not up to me. It's, it, the building committee is very, very good at looking at alternatives. We're going to meet with the town. Planner again, I don't know, next week or the week after the, the invitation is out there to sit. And try to see if we can come up with something else. Um, but the biggest, the biggest question is going to be is we know it's not popular and I'll be just quite honest with everybody. If it goes to referendum next week, it's going to fail. That's, that's, that's just the word around town and we hear that. But the need doesn't go away. So. Um, you know, we'll talk to the building committee, uh, we'll talk with the planner, we'll talk with St. Peters, but you know. Would that help if, if we didn't have the road come out on Keene Road? Is that's, is that still a deal breaker? I mean, if we. You know, the people up there want us to get rid of the salt box. There's, there's, there's different people that express their opinions in different ways, but. Somebody's going to have to compromise. It's, it's not a popular topic.
Yeah, and I think you're right because it, this is reality, right? So it doesn't go there. Then we have. Fifteen or twenty new people that are now on, you know, West Branch Drive where I live, saying they don't want it on their street. And so i- it doesn't solve the problem that we have, which is we need a new facility. So if it takes some compromise to achieve that, or it takes some improved communication to achieve that, the alternative can't be, we don't get a new facility. I mean, that, that, if that's been to me clear. And so if there are things that we should be doing. To think about how to present a compromise or how to do, as you're suggesting. So I don't think we hand, you know, you're, I think it's good thought. So you're, you're thinking like that. Because my, my fear is that we start again and we just get a new group of people who aren't happy with us. Uh, you know, that the whole town isn't unhappy, but obviously the people that are going to be most directly impacted clearly have, you know, have a voice. It's like the old. We need new prisons, just not in, down and not in my town, right? So, you know, we're going to have the same challenge. So how do we present something that is at least. Agreeable from cost perspective, from, which is why I'm very interested. Agreeable from cost perspective, from, which is why I'm very interested in the cost and from obviously a logistics perspective and location and safety. And all those things. We have to sort of stir all that up. But, but I appreciate that. And I think. You know, the additional detail you share and are willing to continue to share and even brainstorming about alternatives, it's all, it's all good. Because it demonstrates to the town that we really take the the concern seriously, that people's voices do matter. And their objections do matter. And we're taking the time to take those seriously, but. As a board and as a town, we can't lose sight of the mission, which is we have to, in my opinion anyway, move forward with. Something other than what we currently have. And that's going to mean, you know, some, some compromises and and ultimately some people probably not being happy. So. I've taken up too much time. So thank you very much. I appreciate.
Anyone else? Anybody from the building committee? Tiffany, did you have?
Yeah, I, I wanted to say something. So, just a couple of things that popped up. What does it take? For anybody? To understand that technology. Gets better and there can be a salt shed that is safe. Or can that never be? Because there are salt sheds that work. If we're thinking about the past, I'm sure they didn't work, but things get better. So at some point. No matter where we put this, we have to have a salt shed that's going to be safe and the people have to believe it's safe. Andy, that was a great idea about having an entrance that doesn't impact. A neighborhood and the farms and also can find affordable housing. So you're. Identify two things that kind of need to be done and in the spirit of compromise, I think that's great. The other thing that we haven't gone back to is in the meantime, and Peter did bring it up about this could take a long time. At some point while we're waiting. We may have to fix some things up at the current public works because it just can't go on like that. And I'm not sure that's wasted money because that's continued to be. The recycling place, the dog pound could be better, whatever facility we could build over there will still support the community. And help us for storage. So I'm not sure that we ought to abandon investing a little money in that and just saying it's, it's. Going to be wasted money because I'm not sure it would be wasted money if we think about how we're going to do it. And what its future use can be. So that's just opening up another option for us to think about. And I know this is difficult for everybody. And, you know, if we, if we stay out in extremes and nobody wants to give anything, we're not going to get anywhere. So. In the spirit of cooperation and negotiating a little bit, somehow we have to get something done. Because it seems to be a standoff right now. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I just, I want to thank everybody, Tom, town staff. Building committee, other fellow select people. Yeah, this is, you know, eve- even, even the opposition, you know, it's great that you put up these questions. I'm just hoping that we could all try to sit down and come up with something that actually works. You know, I. You know, you, you talk about pollution. Has anybody tested around our current salt sheds? Has there been a pollution? You know, you get the one on Old Colchester Road, which is literally at the starts of of the town aquifer. Yet doesn't seem to be a problem. We have got all part of the aquifer in the center of town, gas stations. God knows, you know, what else is is there potentially polluting. You had the old mobile station. Which is right next to the stream, yet it's always been tested. As far as I know, it did mitigate or or migrate a little bit, but not to the extent that it could have. You know, so I, I think there's a lot of things that have been done in the past years that that are improvements. Putting money into the current facility may have to be done, but there are certain things that you just. You, you can't stretch the building. It, it, you know, the, the basic footprint is what the footprint is. So I don't see that easily changing without huge sums of money. You know, so hopefully we can get this thing passed and I was very happy to hear the numbers. Less than half of what some people have said this was going to cost. So that I think is a fantastic news. So I, I, I don't know, Tom, Kevin, Andy, anything else? Before we move on?
I, yeah, I think we move on to keep the move, the meeting moving on. Next, we'll bring it up again in December. We should have some more numbers on what actually it will cost the taxpayers of the town in the budget. To finalize plans. And if that is what the Board of Selectment wants to do. Give a recommendation at that time, once I see that those will be the final numbers. Right now, we're giving you guestimates with percentages of inflation. But those will give us actual hard numbers. And then there'll be a cost on what it's going to cost through the final design. So if we're all under the impression that the thing's just going to go out there and fail a referendum, do you want to spend a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollars to put that? I know John Collins is calling for the vote, but if, if, if we know it's going to fail, do we take that money and put it into the existing site and? And and try to, you know, work on option B or C. That's, that's a tough question you guys are going to have to answer. But that'll be coming sooner than later now that we've got, we thought we had all the information regarding, you know, the wetlands, the historic properties. DPH. So we'll continue to answer questions. If we miss some, send them in. We'll, we'll try to answer them. When Deep sends their letter, we'll, we'll put that up on the website, but. You'll have some, it'll be coming up. Hopefully in the December meeting, we'll have to make some tough choices.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Okay. Any other old business? So moving on to the new business, we have the. Willimantic Waste. Contract renewal. Hopefully everybody had a chance to read it. Read the motion, open it up for discussion. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen to approve the renewal to of the to bulky waste. Municipal solid waste and single stream processing agreements. Between Willimantic Waste Paper Company Incorporated and the Town of Hebron. As presented and authorized Andrew J Tierney, Town Manager, to sign the agreement. Excuse me. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Our next thing, the Green Committee Sign Proposal. And again, I actually read them all and I'm pretty impressed.
Yeah, it's good. It's a good thing.
Do we need, is, was there a, a motion on this or do we need one?
Good question. No, I, it's, you know, this is at a facility that's approved. We could just put signage up. They have the money in their budget. They just wanted to show. The Board of Selectmen and make sure you guys are okay with it. It's okay with the Town Manager's Office. It, it stops Gordy from taking containers and stapling them to the side of the building and putting, do not throw in the recyclables. I think this is a little bit more. Professional, but if you have any questions, I think Caitlin Hershey's still on here, but I think it's a slam dunk. You really don't. Need a motion just unless you guys disagree with something that looks or says something you don't like, but I, I think it's fine.
I, 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 I don't have any issues. I don't know if anybody else did or not. You know, my only comment is, is that I really feel we also need to get some cameras down there. There are people that. Quite literally. Have no regard for recycling laws and in fact. At times seem to do things. Almost as if to snub recycling. So as I say, I, I, I personally feel we need some cameras down there. And we need some way of stepping on their toes when these people wantly. Disregard. Recycling, you know, the, 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 the work that so many other people are in town are trying to do.
We, we have those, that money budget, we're working towards cameras, so.
Good. Thank you. Caitlin, are you on or no?
I am. I'm still here.
Oh, okay. You want to say anything?
Yeah, I mean, we just really wanted you guys to see kind of what we were aiming for down there. You guys had helped us approve this money for this grant that we got. The signage to use with. So we thought it would be worthwhile for you guys to just put eyeballs on it. I mean, I know most of you use the transfer station and recycling center. So, you know, I think one for Board of Selectmen point of view, but two also, you know, if you guys had any edits as visitors or. Saw any issues with it, you know, we've worked pretty closely with Kevin and Gordy on this. I've spent many a day down there measuring and talking with. Gordy and Jeremy and and a couple of the other guys, trying to make sure that we've covered all our bases with this. And, you know, kind of what you said, Dan, is a similar sentiment. They're kind of going with these signs. You know, no matter what our signage looks like and no matter what we do, we're, there's always going to be a jerk down there. So we're really hoping to just sort of mitigate some of this other stuff from great residents who just don't know any better. And that's really what the signage is aiming to do. I think even if we have signage that hands out hundred dollar bills. There are still going to be people that give us the middle finger for recycling. So what we're really trying to do is just take a step in the right direction, get things freshened up. You know, the recycling laws have changed quite a bit since some of these original signs went up. So. You know, we're just trying to make a step in the right direction and we appreciate you guys looking at all of this and, you know, Town Manager's Office, DPW. We've all kind of been in this for a while now getting these signs and, you know, you guys are really the final stamp of approval. I, like you guys said, I don't know if you actually have to vote. But we really did want you to be able to check it out and see what we were going to be about to be printing.
Great. Tiffany?
I just wanted to say thank you, Caitlin, for sticking on with us. I, I think the signs are beautiful. I think they're well designed. So, you know, I want to thank the Green Committee for their efforts on this. You know, be, my line of work, good signage can make a difference. And so thank you for doing this.
I appreciate it.
Kevin, yes, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment and thank Caitlin and the Green Committee for. Helping us to keep the place neat and clean down there. You know, her proposed signs are really going to, you know, spiff up the place a little bit. Because the signs that we did have down there, we got through a grant through DEP many years ago. So this is really going to help a lot. Thank you, Caitlin. And for the Swap Shack, I think she's doing a great job with that. You know, it's only open on Sundays, but it's very popular, you know, and I think she did a heck of a job. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
Peter?
Yeah, Caitlin, great job. You and all the folks working this. This looks really nice and it definitely will be an improvement and. And I think you're right. I mean, this is going to help the ninety five percent of the people who are trying to do it right. I don't want to spend a ton of time trying to. Address the people that are going to still, as you said, give you the middle finger anyway. I, I don't think they really even justify a lot of our time and energy to talk about them. I think this is great for the ninety nine percent of the people in town. Who want to do it right and and now have some clarity and obviously is, it makes the place look nice and kept up as well. So really good work. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I think that to the point of what Dan said, to get those last five percent, we might be looking into cameras. It's tough to wrangle them otherwise.
Perfect. Okay, great. Thank you. We'll be looking to see the signs. Any idea as to. What the, the timeframe was on those?
So it'll take about ten days to produce. I will probably get those sent out next week and then it's going to be up to us to install them. So I would say probably by end of year, we're, I would, I would aim for like a Jan one launch. Just knowing that it's going to take the guys a little bit to get them up and get them printed and all that good stuff.
Beautiful, beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. Our next thing is the. Agenda, the meeting schedule. And again. We have the attached meeting schedule. Hopefully everybody reviewed it. I'll make the motion that move the Board of Hebron Board of Selectmen, adopt the two thousand twenty three Board of Selectmen. Meeting schedule as presented. Were there any issues with the dates? Listed? Hearing none. Read the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, beautiful. We have the draft agenda for the December first, two thousand twenty two meeting. Again, as, as always, anything that you need to add or or whatever, just contact our town staff. So we can move forward with it. That should do that. Our next would be our consent agenda. And these are items that are considered to be routine in nature, which the board. Yes.
This is, I'm sorry, I was reading some information. This is where you would add that new item. We added to the. Agenda of the scenic road.
Yes, yes, yes. I'm sorry, into the new, new business. I apologize that I have it written down here.
That's okay.
No, it's not. Bad on me, bad me. That scenic road. There was a, a, a crest by a number of people to get Kenny Road listed as a scenic road. They did have a meeting Tuesday night. I did send a letter in to the chairman. As, as an individual, the chairman of planning and zoning, but Andy, did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, so just quickly, first and foremost. Kenny Road's a beautiful road. It's, there's no question that, like, like a lot of roads in Hebron, they're just beautiful. We had this application once before in town. I was here, it was Borough Hill Road, which was a residential area, residential road. And it was brought forward at that time because. It was C L and P, not Eversource at the time, that was proposing a, a heavier than normal tree trimming and cutting. Process through there. And they had some really large, beautiful trees and the residents got together. They had profits rock. They met a lot of the criteria of a scenic road. So that's when they, I think it was nineteen ninety nine, it was proposed and I think in two thousand twenty, they adopted that. So there was rationale at the time. To, that's the only history case that we have here in Hebron of a scenic road. And I can go into details on how that's worked with us thus far, but that's fine. So they held, they opened up a, a public hearing, they being planning and zoning. When they adopted, the town adopted the ordinance for this, it was delegated the responsibility of the planning and zoning because a lot of it had to do with the roads. I'm bringing it to the Board of Selectmen's attention. For a couple of reasons, and I do have a memo from the, the town planner. So once again. There's, there's some confusion and even in the public comment section or the public hearing. People couldn't. Separate the request for scenic road versus the public works project. And it's clear that that's confusing, at least to some. And what I, what I'm going to say with trying to be sensitive, like I said, everybody on, on Keene Road are wonderful people. It's a wonderful road. But the town of Hebron only has two percent. Of, it's called Village Green or it's, you know, combination mixed use commercial. And all that frontage butts Keene Road. So, you know, the timing of this, you know, I don't know what the rush is or or maybe we didn't get this ten years ago or there's no, there's no answer to that, but. If you want to align with the plan of conservation development, which was brought up on many other occasions at tonight's meeting. There's the map there. Thank you, Donna. It shows the zoning for all residential and then the yellow is the commercially zone. So that blocks somewhat in the middle. That's the property we're talking. So that blocks somewhat in the middle. That's the property we're talking about and that's Kenny Road right there. Not to say that Kenny Road's not a beautiful road, but we don't have, we being the town. We don't have any plans to widen it, straighten it, change the appearance of it, cut any trees. And if this public works facility were to go through, the only thing we would be putting in would be like a road. Entranceway or a road cut versus um. You know, any type of widening or traffic control signals or, you know, there may be some utilities, but the plan right now is to bring the utilities down through the Johnny Horton Boulevard. So, you know, the planner thought, you know. Back then, the Board of Selectmen delegated this responsibility, responsibility to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They just wanted the Board of Selectmen to know and be aware that this, this could have an adverse effect. Um, and we want to make sure this is vetted. So. You know, I'll, I'll circulate the um, I'm not going to read the whole thing. It's lengthy. I'll circulate the town planners. Uh, letter, but um. You know, there's case history in the town of Coventry. And, and I know people don't understand me, but I've been doing this a long time and I spoke at the public, public hearing. In Coventry, they discontinued a scenic road that was designated a scenic road. Because it lists what you can and can't do for maintenance and things like that, but it's interpretation. It's not as easy as, as, as it's just listed on a piece of paper. So for a fact or an example, in Coventry, they designated this road as a scenic road. The town went out there and tried to do the maintenance, do his arguments or disagreements on how that would be done or should be done. You have to notify everybody on the street um by. Mail, what you plan on doing, get approvals before you do it. So the town just, it was too hard, so the town threw their hands up. So now the residents. That lived on the road that wanted designation finally said, this isn't worth it and they reversed it. So I, I don't want to get into a situation like that. And I think. Kenny Road is beautiful as it is. With the town of Hebron only having a two percent designated area for economic growth, we got to be careful. This could hamper any type of. Um, new development. I mean, the parcel's eighty-eight acres, forty of it's wet, we're proposing using nine acres of it. So there's still a lot of potential there. We might have to run utilities. I, I'm not sure, but in that criteria, if you drill down, you look at the scenic road. There's one, there's one classification at the end. I think it's under item number I. That says you can't have any gravel piles or storage or any salt piles or storage or any structures that would change it, you know? And, and right now, the town in Hebron, we, we spent most of the night talking about a proposal, what we're trying to do with that property. This would be indirect, in my mind, somewhat of a conflict with that, even though it's the road designation versus what we're going to do on the property, but. I can't, I can't help but think that that's going to hinder, you know, certain things moving forward. So all I'm suggesting is that that takes a hard look. Uh, look at, and um, how it's done in some other towns is they form a committee. And it's of planning, zoning, Board of Selectmen, residents, they form a committee. And it's looked at as a town vote, not just the residence of the road, because there's other people that use this road that it's going to affect if there was any type of change. Or if a scenic road designation did something different, that should at least be weighed in on, on, on the approval. And that's in a perfect world. So the way we have it set up right now is not that. We don't have a committee. We have a petition. With everybody except for one resident on the road that agrees. So there's not a lot of criteria and it meets almost all of them. I'm not sure it meets everything, but it's close enough where it could go through. So uh, in talking to the planner, they just want to make sure the Board of Selectmen are aware of this and if they want to weigh in. Um, they can um, you know, send a letter as, as the Board of Selectmen to the uh, planning and zoning, even though the first. Public hearing is closed, they can, they can open up another one, but that'll be up to you guys. If you want to suggest something or have me send a letter on your behalf. We could do that. Uh, but the biggest thing is. They changed that designation in two thousand and twenty, that zoning designation. This isn't anything new. This isn't anything that. You know, so. In the plan of conservation, I think it was two thousand and four, when they did it. We all know what Hebron's a small, quaint, beautiful town. I couldn't agree with it more. I'm very proud to be in charge of it. But at the same time, with only having a two percent of area for economic growth. If, if a lot of the frontage on that road gets turned into a scenic road, that could hamper any type of application or. Or um, advanced movement for uh, any type of. You know, construction or something that would. Uh, need to be application to be in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So just, I think it should be, everything should be considered before decisions made. And we really want to make the Board of Selectmen aware of that. I know the people on Kenny Road are very passionate about their request. I know it was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I want to make sure the Board of Selectmen's aware as well.
Yes, Peter. Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to confuse, I wouldn't, uh, this doesn't make sense to me, the timing. And I, I, I think Andy's right. The idea is we will want to make sure that the town has the ample opportunity to. To manage its facilities with the most flexibility possible. So I don't really see an advantage to the town and. And I, and I also wonder if we shouldn't use this as. An opportunity to sort of rethink, and I'm not sure any of this is, Andy, if this is practical, but. My concern in the future is that if we delegate, the delegation of this to the planning and zoning. Could come not on purpose, but could possibly come in conflict, conflict with. What the Board of Selectmen is doing in conjunction with the town and should we not have, should we consider removing that delegation and working in concert with them with the Board of Selectmen ultimately having approval to make sure we don't. Ultimately get something approved that. That we were not familiar with or not up to speed on, and then obviously hampers our ability to make decisions on behalf of the town going forward. So. I, I sort of see this as a potential red flag for that structure and I wasn't part of the original. Uh, delegation or, and it may, may still make the most sense to do that because clearly I, I understand the planning and zoning, uh, their, their role, but. Um, putting this particular, uh, specific request aside for a moment. I, I am concerned that there could be a potential future issue if we don't catch it like you're doing here. Um, and it, it could limit the Board of Selectmen's flexibility and working with the town going forward if we're not. Really up to speed and maybe at the forefront of making these decisions. So that's just a sort of a, something maybe we can talk about at a future time. Um, but the idea that this could potentially hamper our ability to move forward to me would, uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support it and, and I would. You know, obviously make sure that we, we exhaust the current efforts before we hamper the current efforts. Um. And so I, I would like, you know, at least we should think about how we respond to the, the planning and zoning to make sure if others agree. Um, or if not, I still want, want my opinion to be presented somehow. Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll just, for more clarification, if there's no emergency. Like if it was an application, you have a certain timeframe, the clock starts ticking, you got to act on it. Because this is an ordinance, it's state statute, it's not the same thing. So they can take their time uh, on making a decision. This kind of puts the Planning and Zoning Commission in a, in a little bit of a pickle, you know, because. The request is there, the petition came in, they, they, they meet that criteria. Um, you know, and they don't want to be bad guys and the Board of Selectmen doesn't want to be bad guys. Um. I think we, they consider it. I think the Board of Selectmen should at least. Way in on it a little bit, but um, just under the accompaniment since, since the adoption of the two thousand four plan of conservation. Two thousand four plan contained the original goal of creating a village green district. Since that time, the town has processed and actively implemented the vision of. Operation with the property owners, the Board of Select and Economic Development, the Com- Commission and others. In two thousand, the plan staff and, and uh, commission developed new creative mixed use district regulations called the Village Green District. To guide the future development of the mixed use district. These regulations were adopted and made part of the Hebron zoning regulations. The Planning and Zoning Commission, we zoned the property from R one single family residential to Village Green District in two thousand. So that's right out of the plan of conservation development. I, it's only, I talked to a few people, um. You know, that, if, I think that to put that to an scenic road designation is kind of contradictory to. The plan of conservation development, but that's up for you, you people to decide. And like I said. We're not trying to offend anybody that signed the petition or, or wants this. That's not what I'm about. Um. I just think it should get vetted appropriately and, you know, we already had our project. Scoped and mapped and getting ready to go in there, at least for a vote. We purchased the property, so it's not like. We're trying to do a, a, you know, a block here. I just, I just think. Our project, what we're proposing has been talked about for quite a while and I think we're in front of this, this thing. And if this is going to. Possibly do any hamper, hampering to it, I think that needs to be vetted.
Uh Tiffany?
You know, look, I think, um. I think we have to separate, you know, the, the DPW project from this for a moment because I think of, as Andy point found and I did read. Our town planner's memo, you know, the designation of a scenic road. Means a lot of changes that could have the opposite effect of what, you know, people are intending by going for that designation. Um, you know, the reality is that that land is, is zoned and, and was considered for economic development. So. Whether the DPW building goes on there or not, depending on the results of a referendum, you know, I, I would agree with Peter. I don't. Want to see the only property we have available to, to welcome small businesses to, you know, be, be hampered. By such a designation. Um, so I, I think we need to treat them as two separate issues. Um, so you know, I would, I would agree with what's been said here. Um, and I would defer, you know, to the town planner and then what he's outlined in his memo, you know, I think he, he just, you know, he accurately. Weighs in on the issue and I think we go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and, and what's said here tonight is a lot of the gist of the letter that I had sent. To uh, the Chairman of Planning and Zoning. Uh, with, with my, with the same fears as what's been stated here. Uh, just to expand on that a, a touch more. Um, I, I think it would behoove us to. Possibly even have a, either a meeting or a workshop or something with planning and zoning. Right now they are in the process of doing. A whole new, um. And I'm trying to think, Andy, help me out. What are they calling it?
P O C D, Plan of Conservation Development.
Thank you. And they've talked to the Historic Properties Commission. They've talked to, you know, this group, that group, every group. Um, I haven't seen anything coming before us. Uh, not only as uh, drug, excuse me, as drafts or whatever. Um. I, I just want to make sure that we are. All in the same, or heading our ships in the same direction. Um. I, I, I'm a little. Nervous that, you know, they, they have one uh, long-term outlook going one direction and. We're not all in, in, in the same page. And I think it's. Something that we really need to, to be cognizant of and make sure that. Um, we're, we're, our, our thoughts are, are in alignment. Um. So uh, and as I say, I don't know whether my letter had gotten read, read the other night. Um, but. It's, it is something that we, we definitely need to be concerned with. Um, so, thank you. Is there, is there any need to put that on uh, old business next? Next uh, meeting, Andy, or no?
Yeah, we can do that. We'll talk with the, the town planner. I told him, I was, there's at least, um, you know, a pride you guys, I sent his letter to you.
Uh, yes.
We'll make that part of the record. It'll be in the minutes or a part of this uh, agenda packet when we put it up. Okay, Donna?
Yes, I got it.
Okay. Uh, any other new business? Okay, hearing none, moving into our consent agenda. And as I say, these are items to be considered routine in nature. Uh, the board may or may not need to discuss individually. Uh. We have two things, the approval of the minutes of October sixth. Uh, two thousand twenty-two and of November third, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, that was a pretty short meeting since there was no quorum. Uh, and then the tax refunds as listed. Um. So does anybody want to break out anything or have any corrections on the minutes? They all look pretty benign to me, so. Make a motion that we move to the Board of Selectmen to approve the following consent agenda items and motions. Contained therein as if individually adopted. And as I stated, it's the approval of the. October sixth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting minutes. And the November third, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting of which there was no quorum and the tax refunds as listed. All in favor? I think there's just three of us. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Um, myself, Dan Larson, aye. I believe uh, Mark Rivera had to, uh, sign off. Um. With that, we have our liaison reports. Um, and of course, Gail is uh, not with us. Um. She is, they, they ended up redoing casts on her, on her uh, arms and all, and she's in a tremendous amount of pain.
Sounds awful.
Um, again, my heart goes out to her. Um. No one wants to be in pain. So, anyway, uh, Peter?
Just a quick, uh, the Parks and Rec Commission, um, they just provided updates on the program, the trunk retreat and the ghost run, things that have subsequently happened, but they were preparing for that and those went well. Uh, moving forward with some of the ARPA projects previously approved, like the fence for the softball and some things, you know, that's being worked on and moving forward. So. Working with Andy and, and moving some of these projects forward. Did spend a ti- a bunch of time, they did some modification of their uh. Updated practices and policies and things like that, uh, whatever. I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of the, the procedures manual that they have, but. Um, did some sectional, some updates there and some of the sections to, to modernize that and then spent a bunch of time. Preparing for the budget uh, with the C I P uh, components of that. So. Good meeting, uh, good constructive meetings always from uh, from those folks and uh, sort of getting ready for the, for the budget season. Thanks.
Okay, uh Tiffany?
Just a couple of quick items. Um, Open Space is going to meet on December seventh and they'll be discussing um, Chittenden Road pro- property appraisals that they receive for potential open space purchase. And so this is the property that abuts. Um, the town-owned unimproved section of Chittenden Road on both sides. Um. And we did hear from the Green Committee indirectly, but just of note that they are closing the swap shack for the winter. Um, the last day is December eighteenth and the swap shack will be closed through March and they'll reopen in April. Um, and that's what I have.
Okay, um. Uh, Hebron Historic Properties Commission, um, they've actually been meeting with our town planner. Uh, looking at possibly uh, getting a parking lot put in, you know, for parking at the Peters house. Uh, they're still working with, with some designs uh, in the, the Corson property. Uh, build out Toomey Drive, that area. Um. The fire department, um, the corporation, uh, the members have dissolved the Fire Department Corporation. That was the benevolent arm of, of the fire department. Um. They have formed a new entity. Um. A lot of that's controlled either by the newly installed executive committee or the fire chief. Um, so. I'm not sure where that, that leaves, uh. You know, anything. Um. They, they had some reasons why they decided to do that action. Um. So at any rate, that, that is uh, something that's going on. So a lot of the social. Functions that the old corporation used to do apparently are no longer going to be done. So, um. More to follow as, as we get into budgets and stuff like that. So other than that, that's all I have. So we're back to our public comment again. And again, uh, please, you know, state your name, address, uh. Please keep comments to three minutes or less. Do we have any people for a public comment? I see Mr. Tommeleri again?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and um. Boy, I wish I had more than three minutes and I wish I, again, as I mentioned on September nineteenth, had as much time as our town engineer to make a presentation. Because I have some compelling information that will simply not fit in three minutes. Um, but going uh, in addition to other concerns on the public works, I would like. Um, but going, uh, in addition to other concerns on the public works, I would like to um, comment on the scenic road public hearing, which was brought up tonight. And, um, I would like to quote from our town planner, Matthew Bordeaux, quote, "My review of the request and supporting materials finds that all requirements have been satisfied." I find it just, it I'm really perplexed by the idea that the Board of Selectmen would try to join with planning and zoning to oppose, uh, an action, uh, fulfilled by town ordinance uh, that the people of Hebron are requesting and have fulfilled. We have met all the requirements and that, uh, this board would act against that is just, is just shocking to me. I, I can't really comprehend that. Um, I would also like to remind you that in the zoning regulations for the Village Square District, which is the bordering, does border on Kenny Road, uh, the Village Square Edge is a specific section of the district. And I quote the zoning regulations, the Village Square Edge component is intended to be the least dense area of Village Square District. This area is expected to contain primarily residential, civic, recreational and open space uses. It provides a discernible boundary for the Village Square District, preserves natural features, accommodates greenways as shown in the plan of conservation and development and contains buffer areas along the edge of the district. And ensures compatibility with the surrounding uses in Hebron Center by serving as the transitional area of the Village Square District. These are the zoning regulations of the Town of Hebron. So the idea that this is gonna be some sort of economic development along the edge of Kenny Road is not possible by the zoning regulations that are on the books today. So our requirement have been fulfilled. Uh, as it stated seventeen out of eighteen residents and less at the planning and zoning meeting, there was over fifty-two residents on that public hearing. Uh, I understand for the Wall Street Public Hearing of sidewalks, you had three residents. So just let that soak in. These are not, there's not fifty people on Kenny Road that wanted this. This, this scenic road designation is seen important to people all across Hebron. So I would like you to really, uh, take, uh, that into consideration as you move forward and try to block a, a legally fulfilled, uh, request by the people that you represent that have elected you and that you are under your own quote, agents of the people. So, um, thank you for the time to express that.
Thank you.
There is another public comment by Gabe. Gabe, if you would state your, um, your full name and address, please. Thank you.
Hey, good evening. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, can you, just can you, everyone hear me?
Yes, yes, we can answer.
Okay, uh, two comments. Uh, Chairman, I think, I believe you had mentioned, um, you know, looking, potentially looking at the old Colechester roadside and, uh, being that there's a salt shed there. Um, testing for potential contaminants or if it has been tested. I, if it has been tested, I'd love to see the results. If it hasn't been tested, I think looking at the area and it, it's impacts, uh, I think would be a wise decision to potentially look at, you know, for you know, what salt has, uh, uh, in the area. Um, second comment, um, that I'd like to make is that I, I'm, uh, by the way, I'm Gabriel Ackerman, one thirty-eight Mill Stream Road. Um, I am one of those folks that, uh, oppose, uh, putting the, uh, facility here, namely for many reasons. Um, you know, I, I had an opportunity to tour the site. Um, it's a beautiful site, historic site. Um, in addition to the, the, I did get a chance to talk to William, uh, a former, uh, hydroal- hydrogeologist for the state of Connecticut who worked on cases like this. Um, and he personally explained the impacts, uh, and I, I believe everyone has seen the letter of the salt and the potential for salt contamination. And I wanna highlight the risk that the town is putting themselves in based on general, Connecticut General State Statute of, you know, if there is pollution, and, and I think it's a matter of when, it's not an if question. If there's, if there is pollution on my, my town, in my well, uh, the town would be responsible for that and, and the taxpayer, I am a taxpayer. Um, I, I, you know, that is a huge cost. Um, I know I'm testing for my well, I, so I, I know where my, my well does not require treatment at this point in time. Um, so if and when salt contamination occurs, it, it would be hard not to tie, you know, after, post this public facility comes into, into play, it would be hard not to tie in the issue here of so- salt contamination with pollution in the water to the surrounding areas. I, I don't think it'd be difficult to, to, to show that and prove that. So that, that's a huge risk for the town, uh, as I'm viewing it. And second, and, and lastly, I'll, I'll close with this, is this, I, I would hope that you know, folks are looking at a plan B because in my discussions with the town, the folks that we've, we've, you know, I've met were, there, there are quite a few people that oppose this. So you put it up for referendum. Um, my, my thought would be there should be a plan B in place. I, I like the way, uh, Mr. Tierney had spoke to and proposed the idea of a plan B. I, I think that's a wise decision at this point. And I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
This is Lily Rhodes and I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, please.
So Lily Rhodes, one oh six Slocum Road. I had two comments. One, um, regarding the Department of Public Works, uh, uh, project. One of the things that I thought I heard at the public information session was that the Public Building Committee was going to take an updated look at other potential locations. I, I know the sense is there is not another location and yet I would hope that that exercise would be pursued if only to address that question with updated information. Um, for the purpose of what I thought I heard at the meeting as a, as a request. So that's one thing. It's kind of along the lines of the plan B, but, um, and the other was on the scenic roads. Hebron is so gorgeous. Maybe we could proactively identify some of the roads in town to be scenic roads. It, it, it seems like a lovely idea. Um, I will, will withhold an opinion on, um, Kenny Road, but just generally speaking, wouldn't it be nice to have more than just one? So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Andy, please, yes.
Yeah, I normally don't respond to public comment, but just a quick answer to Lillian Rhodes's, uh, question, and we do have some building committee members on here. That, if I wasn't clear, we're gonna meet with the town planner and a couple of people, myself, and we are gonna relook at, uh, some other options. So that'll be taking place in the next week or two.
Okay. Any other, uh, public comment?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Mary, one ten Kenny Road. Uh, I spoke earlier about house number ninety-five on Kenny Road and how it sits directly below where the new road will go through, proposed road for Public Works to John Horton Boulevard. And while we were at the meeting, the owner of house number ninety-five called me and said, yes, in fact, they do get groundwater in their cellar and their, their land's quite wet. And the water does come from the headwaters of that middle stream. So there is a concern that the pollution that comes off of vehicles on a regular basis on that causeway might affect their lives. Um, the second thing is I don't see really how changing the driveway to the public works helps protect the bedrock aquifers that feed our wells because the facility will still sit on top of the fractured bedrock aquifers. And that is the most important part is protecting our well water. And I agree with Gabriel who called in. And I believe it is under the Connecticut law for drinking water that he who contaminates the water must pay to replace the water plus ten years of water bills to those households. So that's something to look at. It's twenty-two A dash four seventy-one in the Connecticut laws for water. And I think that although we need a new public works, it looks like we're gonna double the cost if the wells get contaminated below the facility. And then the taxpayers are faced with not only bringing in town water, but paying our town water bills for ten years. So that makes it kind of expensive, but it's also a really, really beautiful piece of land and it would make great for ecotourism. And, uh, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Rhodes, we usually don't, but go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to thank Andy for, uh, clarifying, uh, on the next steps. Um, and also ask a question. Um, will having the public works trucks going, uh, in and out using the John Horton Boulevard affect or in any way limit potential development of the land that the John Horton Boulevard passes through? Cause I know having, um, the big, uh, Department of Public Works trucks driving through the, uh, Burn Hill Park uh, turned out to be a problem. So I don't expect an answer, uh, but it's just a question, uh, that, um, about rerouting. So, thank you.
Andy, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'll just answer that quickly. The, the selectmen at the time didn't feel having, uh, trucks and equipment mixing with recreational uh, parks and younger kids, uh, was a good idea. So we were looking to have a separate entrance to that property. And when we found out we could not do that due to some wetlands, that we aborted that. And then plus we found out there wasn't enough usable space after constructing the park. They moved the fields and construction around to avoid costs with ledge and blasting and we lost some of the area. So that, one, the area wasn't big enough and two, we couldn't have a separate entrance. So without having that, they didn't want the trucks to be mingled with the, uh, the kids or the games up there. As far as the Johnny Horton Boulevard, when we did the conceptual plan, we took the show on the road. We met with, uh, Colbrook Village and we gave them a worst case scenario with, um, plow trucks, possibly fire trucks at that time, uh, and whatever else. And, uh, we, uh, didn't foresee any problem with their operations. Uh, as far as Johnny Horton Boulevard and future development. I mean, Jim Cilio would probably be mad at me, but I've, I've been here twenty-seven years and, uh, we've, we've been closer to eighteen years now trying to get stuff to move up in there and it hasn't happened yet. So that was the reason the Hortons were looking to possibly sell off some of that land to us when we were looking for uh, property for a project like this. So it, it'll remain to be seen. I don't have a, a crystal ball, but as far as the Colbrook Village and that end of it, I don't, I don't think that would affect any future development over there.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none?
One more, Dan. Greg Shortell would like to make a comment.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Greg Shortell, twenty-two Kenny Road. Uh, I just wanted to add one more comment to, uh, the response, uh, earlier and the questions that came up during the September Public, uh, Hearing Committee. And that was in regards to other towns that have public works facilities in close proximity to their downtown area. Uh, and I appreciate the, the work and the research that the committee has done to come up with the names of those towns. But I, I find it hard to believe that, uh, any of those, um, facilities are sitting on top of a, a GA rated, um, watershed such as we're proposing here, uh, in Hebron. So I just wanted to make that comment as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. Thank you. Thank you all. Uh, have yourself a happy Thanksgiving, cause that's, I've been told next week. And, uh, we will see you actually, um, before, before we sign off. Uh, Donna, did you wanna say anything about the, uh, any of the festivities taking place next weekend?
We have the, um, Hebron Holiday Celebration on Saturday, December third. Um, it starts at two thirty and runs until five with the tree lighting just before five. That's at the, um, Douglas Library Old Town Hall. Right, there will be information up on our Facebook page and website and everyone is invited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Peter, did you, or, okay. Have a, have a great night.
So you're making a motion to adjourn at nine twenty-six.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, all.